Seven o'clock, we will call the February 14th meeting of the Council on Order. Mr. Peterson, will you lead us in the push?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Lee, will you call them all?
Mr. Air, Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. O'Connor.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Sparks.
Here.
Ms. Wilds.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a form.
Approval of the minutes for our January 24th, 2023 meeting.
Move to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes for our January 24th meeting. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Eight zero. Approval from the minutes from our February 6th special session.
Move to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve our minutes from our February 6th special session. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Eight zero. Approval of the agenda.
Mr. President, I would move to amend the agenda to consider miscellaneous two and three after miscellaneous one and add miscellaneous three A, council to consider acceptance of conflict of interest disclosures.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to amend the agenda to consider miscellaneous items number two and three after miscellaneous number one and add miscellaneous number three A, council to consider acceptance of conflict of interest disclosures, and a second. All those in favor raise your right hand.
We've approved it, we're not amending it.
Yeah, it's amended, yeah.
We're voting to amend.
Yeah.
Got it.
Mr. President.
Ms. Wilds.
I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor raise your right hand. Eight zero. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present, I do not have any, but if you would like to speak, there are slips of paper out there by the agendas and you can give those to Ms. Lee's and we will work you in as the item comes forward. Council Committee reports, Downtown District Committee.
Yes, the Downtown District Committee met on January 25th and Mr. Air, Mr. Peterson were present in the room and Mr. Smith and I were present electronically. We talked through some of the activities. Mr. Light gave us an update of where we are with the status of funds that we have available for this year. A little over $600,000 is available. We also have a little over $342,000 of funds from previous years that have not been spent so that we could apply those to other projects. Mr. Roto-Wall stated that the Bridge of Flowers project is substantially completed, so it will be fun to see how that turns out this spring and continues to mature over the years. Mr. Head was there and talked about the activation of the East Alleyway and that the gates were installed last week, so it will be fun to see those gates in use later this summer when the celebration will be planned when weather permits. We also talked about the decorative crosswalks that have been installed and the appreciation and enthusiasm for that, so we're looking at other areas in the city where we might be able to do that. We've been talking about for a while of updating some of our four-way flashers and we are looking at cost estimates to do that with decorative signal poles and Mr. Roto-Wall was going to give us some updated figures. We'll come to you probably at the next meeting, the next couple meetings with a formal request for approval for disbursement from the Downtown District Committee because it will be over that $50,000 threshold that we've set forth.
They will be black.
I'm sorry, they will be black, yes, of course. And that goes along with an idea of creating, of changing some of the street sign names to black, so we're still investigating that and what that might look like in the downtown area. Our town grant is almost completed, so that's been a tremendous partnership with Nickel Plate Arts. And then we also did consider a grant for the Front Porch Music Festival. This is a newer community activity that's taking place and just like with the Peony Festival where they came to us to ask for some support in those early years, the Front Porch Music Festival is also doing so, so the committee agreed to provide some sponsorship with also introducing them to some other potential partners and sponsors in the community, so we're excited for that continued growth. And then we got, we had a few development project updates. And that's really it. Anyone else from the committee who would like to add anything?
The gates look great.
They do.
Thank you, Ms. Wilds. Parks Board.
Yes, Mr. President, Parks Board met February 1st. It was a rather brief meeting, only had one line item on their agenda, but some of the things that were talked about, since the weather's kind of been nice, they plan on being able to trim some trees to make room for the new playground equipment and kind of get a jump on that. As far as golf goes, they attended a show down in Florida and looked at some new technology that they can add to the golf carts and looking to replace them for next year. Let's see, summer camp signup has started. If it hasn't already filled up, they're anticipating it to fill up rather fast. And they also are looking for a lot, there is a lot of job openings with the park and golf, full-time, part-time, seasonal. They asked if you're interested, just go on the city website and fill out an application and ask about it.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Any questions? Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. President. On February 3rd, the Rhodes Committee met. Mr. O'Connor attended electronically. I was there and for those of you that are following along, Brian Air was there, but he was a little bit late again. Not as much as last time though, so we will let it slide. We had significant talk about a lot of different intersections, but the biggest one we talked about was the 146th Street and Allisonville interchange that is coming up. The letting for that is February 2023, so it's still later this month. And then spring of 2024, that will be constructed. It is, 146th Street is going to go over Allisonville and Allisonville will have a roundabout underneath, which I've never seen a roundabout underneath going up, but it looks kind of interesting the way it's going to be, so hopefully that will be good. A few of the other quick things we went over, we've got lots of roundabouts coming, as many of you know, the State Road at 38 Oakmont, that one has been delayed again unfortunately. We are looking at late '23, early '24. They are all state delays due in part to utility relocations, but that's really what keeps pushing us back is state stuff, so unfortunately, I know a lot of, there's a lot of people out there that are really wanting to get that one done. The other thing that I did want to mention because it's new to some people is we are going to be having a reduced conflict intersection on, at State Road 37 and 186th Street. It is similar to a Michigan right, but nobody can top, call it a Michigan right because it's not exactly a Michigan right, I guess, but it is very similar to that. But that is something that's modeled as one of our very dangerous intersections, so hopefully that will help cause, help alleviate any potential calamities we have out there. That's it, unless I've got any other questions or unless I missed anything Mr. O'Connor would like to add on to.
No, there's just, there's a lot of construction out there, so be careful, but it's necessary and needed and there'll be quite a bit happening over the next few years as we go forward, so, but it's moving in the right direction.
Yes, yes. 146th and Allisonville is a county project, as Wild just mentioned, so yes. Still be a good project to have done.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met February 9th, myself and Darren Peterson. Chuck Haberman discussed the economic development agreement, tax abatement authorization for best equipment company. Steve Stryker talked to us about the request for examination of financial statements according to generally accepted accounting principles. Mr. Spalding discussed with us the 2024 FIRE cumulative capital fund tax rate reset and he also renewed an authorization to invest CDs statewide. He went over that information with us to renew authorization to invest CDs statewide. Steve Stryker discussed the year-end 2022 encumbrance carry forward and he also talked about a cancellation of expired warrants. The warrant is a check, they do this every year at this time. Year appropriation transfer, year-end appropriation transfers for RC 1-22, Ian discussed that and Ian also went over our quarterly financial reports for quarter four of 2022. That and this claims come to the council with a favorable recommendation. Well, no, we have to vote on those. We do have a quorum, so, yeah. There's only two of us at the meeting.
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I would move that we approve the claims that submitted.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the claims that have submitted. All those in favor raise your right hand. Eight zero, thank you. I accidentally omitted a spot for the mayor to speak. I apologize.
Apology accepted, Mr. President. Thank you. I'll be really brief. First of all, happy Valentine's Day to all of you. It's great to be with you. Mr. Peterson, looked like you dressed for Easter, but hey, that's all right. Thinking ahead, I like it. Springtime's coming. Two quick things. One, and to piggyback on the amount of projects that were discussed tonight, I just want to highlight once again that we have a projects page on the cityofnoblesville.org website. It is a quite the lengthy list, but Emily Gaylord and her team are constantly updating that. There's going to be a lot more social media presence out. 2023 is going to be a year of construction as there already is a lot going on right now, so I just want to encourage for any of your constituents that approach you or for you in general, there is a lot of great information on there that Emily and Robert Harrington and her team do a lot of great work on that, so make sure you check that out. Second thing on Pleasant Street, which is a major project, if you, currently you'd have to, you kind of have to work your way down there to see a lot of the progress happening over the bridge, but there's a lot of work happening on the White River Bridge. That is, as you well know, a great partnership with our friends at the, at Hamilton County. I know County Councilor Mark Hall is in the audience and I appreciate their support of that project. Part of that project will be disassembling the old historic railroad trust bridge that is going across the White River. You may recall there, because of some waterway and Army Corps of Engineer and DNR issues, that that bridge will be disassembled starting this week, but we are going to be announcing this week as well a partnership with our friends at Connor Prairie who will be accepting that bridge and working it into their, their long-term planning on Connor Prairie's facility. So again, I want to thank Norman Burns and his team at Connor Prairie and all their work for working with us in partnership to preserve that history going forward, obviously making way for a project that is much needed, but also preserving that history that will be going down to Connor Prairie. So be looking for that announcement later this week, but I'm sure, I'm sure will be some chatter about that. I'm just checking to make sure I didn't say anything wrong by the beep on my phone, and I didn't. So anyways, that, I just want to make you aware of that. And any questions, let us know, but thanks for all you guys do and happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make sure it wasn't Mr. Hall behind you saying, "Hey."
Thank you. On that note, we will hear miscellaneous number one, a report from the Noblesville Preservation Alliance.
My name is Sandy Stewart and I am the Director of Community Outreach for the Noblesville Preservation Alliance, and I am here tonight to thank you for the support that you have given us in this past year, in the year before and the year before that, and because of all that you have done to help us grow and change, I brought a little show and tell. We won the award for the best renovation from the advancing Noblesville Awards. This is my PowerPoint. We're not totally old school. I also want to thank you for the way you govern our city, the fact that ours is not the only organization that you support and the events that you support makes it a wonderful place to live. I would like to introduce our new president for this year, Amy Coyle, and next to her is my Valentine date for dinner after I finish here. So forgive me if I just run out. The written report I've prepared, and I am so sorry, I did order 15 copies when I picked them up today, I didn't count them and I received 10, so I'm going to give, I think Greg is the one I missed. I will give you a copy.
That's okay, I've got one here.
Okay. In the report, it's been kind of a long haul. We started, I think, first requesting help when we purchased a building. Our organization has done a lot for this community for a number of years, but never had a headquarters. Now we do. We have a, an award-winning headquarters. And you may also notice that we don't have a copy machine, so otherwise there would have been plenty. In the report, I've talked about the winding up, how long, I mean, it took us basically three years. We had, of course, we had some problems in between with the, I don't know if you had heard about the COVID problem, but there was a lot of fundraising that we were not able to do, events that we were not able to hold, but we have finally finished the, we're up and running. We did get in 2022, we were able to get things ready in time to have some, well, there's a list, 22 events, I'm sure you don't want to hear me read all of them, but they were all terrific, and we did that without having our ramp in place, but we finally got that done and it took, it took a village for that as well. We moved our old, Indiana Landmarks requested that we move the ramp from the side of the building. We moved the ramp, saved it, all the lumber, but moving it to the back of the building so it wasn't such an eyesore required cutting a door in. We had a lot of volunteer help to do that. I noted that Peterson Architecture drew up new site plans for us. We had cement donated, so that took a long time, but we finally got that done in time for, to use our building for the Porch Music Festival. So I've given you a list of several things that we did in 2022. You probably don't want to hear me enumerate them, although they were all terrific. And our, we've already had one event in 2023. It was a community conversation and I gave you a list of the questions that people discussed, but it was about our, our community and how people feel about it and what it means to them. And it was really a pleasure to hear how people feel about Noblesville. Take a bow, get a lot of credit for that. All that you're doing makes us such a vital and wonderful community to live in. We were really proud that at the kickoff for the bicentennial celebration, our mayor was asked to speak on the topic of historic preservation, and that's not an accident because that's what our, our city is known for. And that's something that we, our organization certainly, that's our, our main purpose, but we also participate in as many other things as, as we can to be part, to be a vital part of the city. I couldn't help bragging that we have won the People's Choice Award for four years in a row in the bed race. Although we always do have a historic preservation theme and this one was roaring twenties. And a goal that we have for 2023 is to hire a part-time executive director. It is remarkable that this organization has survived as long as it has, first with, without a headquarters, secondly, without any paid staff. It's all volunteer. And being a president, I don't want to make Amy too nervous, but it's really a big job to, to try to run this organization while maybe working full-time, taking care of your kids and your home, so we think that will be possible this year and you will be part of making that happen as well. I've given you some, some of the things that we plan to do, that we will do in 2023, but giving you a lot of details about two of the bicentennial events. One is we will bring, the master loser for the Gibson Guitar Company will bring a, a truckload of antique instruments and demonstrate them, play them, talk about their history and how it's relevant to the history of society when, when they were developed. For instance, you probably did not know that the mandolins were mass-produced because of, Mr. Gibson was inspired by the Ford Motor Company's assembly line. Prior to that, they were put together, you know, one craftsman made an entire instrument instead of the, being able to mass-produce them, but, and I would certainly be remiss since one of our stars is here, September 10th, we will do an kind of an old-time radio style reading of Forgiven, which is a play that was written by John Wise in Indiana, or in Noblesville in 1898 and was first performed at the Wild Opera House, and our cast is here, starring as the reformed villain will be our mayor. And two other mayors will join in, but the, so we wanted to include as many different organizations as we could and make this truly a community experience. I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you have.
Will the mayor be singing in this?
Oh, certainly, and tap dancing, I agree. Actually, there is singing in it, but I think, well, Emily Gaylord has, is Emily here? She has the part that has singing, so we'll, maybe we'll audition her and find out if she should sing it or, or just recite poetry, so.
Sandy, I really appreciate that you, you reach out into the preservation community and I've seen you speak at Plan Commission, BZA, Downtown District Committee, and I really appreciate sharing those concerns and as we grow as much as we do what you've done for the preservation community and the way you thoughtfully treat this as a partnership, and it's not always been that way, and I really appreciate the hard work you're doing.
Thank you. Now Amy's going to start doing it. No, I, I will continue to, to do the, the community work. I, I really enjoy the, the committees and it's very exciting to be part of, of the evolution of our city and the, really, like the Bridge of Flowers and, you know, so I appreciate being allowed to be part of that, so.
I think that's the first time I've heard somebody say they're excited to go to Downtown District Committee.
I like, one of the things that I enjoy most in life is working with a, a group of people who care about what they're doing and, and care about what they're doing, and, and who are working for a common purpose. And that would qualify.
Thank you for all that you've done.
Did you make any of the jewelry or clothing you have on tonight?
I'm sorry?
Did you make any of the jewelry or clothing that you have on tonight?
No. I did not.
That's the first time.
But I did buy it all on eBay. I am an excellent shopper. And I had, I was short one copy for Greg, so you can have one.
You want to just give it to him?
Do you need a copy of?
Okay.
And I will, I will email the files to you.
Thank you so much, Sandy.
Thank you.
Good luck, Amy.
Enjoy dinner.
Okay, moving on to miscellaneous number two, counsel to consider resolution RC-4-23, a resolution approving an economic development agreement with best equipment. Mr. Haberman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Excited to share this project with you. If you haven't heard, we have a great family-owned company coming to Noblesville to call Noblesville Home from Lawrence, Indiana, just south of here. Best equipment company will be, have secured 11 and a half acres on South Harriman Boulevard and 141st Street. They intend to build their corporate headquarters, roughly 35,000 square feet. They'll invest $9.6 million, bring 41 jobs, high-quality, high-wage jobs. And our offering and our partnership is through a tax abatement for five years at 80%. We do have representatives from the company in the audience. Bob Schefner is the CFO, and then their consulting partner, KSM is also here, Amy McDonald. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the project, if you have any.
Any questions?
Mr. President. Is this on the hard corner, Chuck?
Yeah, so there's, the parcel's there, and there's a, some water on the actual hardcore, hard corner there. And then it kind of widens out as you go north, and it'll be right along there.
I thought it was, but I didn't see a rendering, so.
Actually, I can show you. We saw it in the finance committee.
Oh, thanks.
There you go. So you can see Harriman kind of comes down there, angles. You got 37 there on the right-hand side, and on the south is 141st Street.
Mr. President, just for the good of the, the order, you'll know there's two items on here, and Chuck did mention a tax abatement. Just to keep in mind, this is the first step towards that process of a declaratory resolution, saying that we intend to create an economic revitalization area, and we'll establish a hearing, and we'll do the confirmatory at the next meeting.
Thank you. Any other questions? We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
You have the resolution?
I'll move to approve resolution RC-423.
There's a motion and a second to approve resolution RC-4-23. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight, zero. Miscellaneous number three, counsel to consider resolution RC-5-23, a declaratory resolution designating an economic revitalization area and tax abatement with best equipment, and establishing a public hearing.
Yep, so this is what Mr. Hughes was referring to. This is just the next step in approving the tax.
I would move to approve resolution RC-523.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve resolution RC-5-23. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
And establish a public hearing.
We'll do that next. Eight, zero.
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I move to establish a public hearing for resolution RC-5-23 at our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to establish a public hearing for resolution RC-5-23 at our next regular meeting.
Thank you.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight, zero. Thank you, Mr. Haberman. Resolution, or, sorry, miscellaneous number 3A, counsel to consider acceptance of conflict of interest disclosures. Mr. Peterson.
There are two in your packet. One is for the annual facade grant program. We often do work, and I never know when it comes in, but there's a, you get a $500 assistance, design assistance as part of that. So I do it annually. That's the first one. And the second one is an item, I was the architect for an item on the agenda tonight, 5223 at Cumberland Point, Cumberland Point Business Park.
Thank you. And on this one, we just need a motion to accept that.
Mr. President.
Ms. Wild.
I move that we accept the conflict of interest. Mr. Peterson.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the conflict of interest disclosures. All the, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven in favor.
Abstained.
One abstention. Thank you. New ordinance is for discussion. Counsel to consider ordinance number 3-2-23, an ordinance to reestablish the fire cumulative capital fund tax rate, and establishing a public hearing.
Move to introduce.
Second.
Mr. Spalding.
Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, CFO and controller. And as you have learned over the past few years, there's a complex array of state laws around all of the various rules and regulations for pretty normal and routine financial work that you, as the fiscal body of the city, have to approve. And this is another one of those types of things. This has become kind of a ritual the last few years, bringing this forth. What this is doing is, one of the funds that we have is the Fire Cumulative Capital Fund. It has its own tax rate established in state law, and the purpose of this action today is to just set you up so that during the budget process, you have maximum flexibility to set this tax rate at the level that's needed to address the, the funding requirements of the city. And so that's basically what it does. You're saying, you know, to the, to the Department of Local Government Finance, we want full flexibility to set this tax rate at the, at the highest level that's available, but we typically don't set it at that, at that level. That gets determined during the budget process.
What is it currently?
It is currently two points, well, I guess it's currently 2.7 cents.
Any other questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I move that we establish a public hearing for ordinance 03-02-23 at our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to establish a public hearing for ordinance number 3-2-23 at our next regular meeting. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight, zero. Thank you, Mr. Spalding. Counsel to consider ordinance number 4-2-23, an ordinance adopting a change of zoning from R5 multifamily residential and PV planned business to R5 PB/PD residential Planned Business/Plan Development for approximately 34 acres, including a preliminary development plan south of State Road 32 and east of Hazel Dell Road.
Move to introduce.
Second.
Good evening, Development Services Manager for the City of Noblesville. This property is located at the southeast corner of what is State Road 32 and Hazel Dell Road. The council, in the last month or so, approved or adopted a change of zoning for this property. It's a total of 34 acres, partially commercial, and, and the remainder of it being, the remainder of it being residential. This is, this portion would be the adoption of the preliminary development plan and their ordinance. The developer has been working with the administration and the mayor for several months. The council has also adopted a development agreement for this project. Well, I think I got my page mixed up here a little bit. Anyway, the proposal is for approximately 12 acres of commercial. That would include, could include in, inline, inline tenants. It could be a restaurant. That has not been established yet, but there are 12 acres that will be used for commercial. Again, the Plan Commission did hold a public hearing at their last meeting. There were no individuals that came forward to speak at that public hearing. The Plan Commission did send a favorable recommendation for adoption to the council with an 8-0-0 vote. And staff would ask if the council would be willing to suspend the rules and adopt this, this evening.
Any questions for Ms. Yelton?
The developer, Jim Adams, is in the audience. Should you have any particular questions of him?
Any questions for Mr. Adams? He came all this way. Do you want to speak? Any pretty pictures? Yeah, there you go. There we go.
Council members, thanks for having us. My name is Jim Adams with Secure Holdings. And it's the prettiest picture we have at the moment. So we are, we have been pedaling the bike pretty furiously here over the last couple of months with some engineering challenges that kind of popped up. So we've addressed all of those with regard to the 32 expansion, and, you know, indots requirements and the city's requirements. So thankfully, things have hung together here. We, and like, we already started our off-site legal drain rebuild, so there's a lot of engineering challenges here. So that work is underway. So if you're driving up 32, we have a drive entrance cut, construction entrance cut, I should say, off of Hazel Dell, just south of 32. And the legal drain work is happening now, so that should happen in the next 60 days. We are looking forward to a, anticipating a, a bond closing here in maybe 60 days, to obviously help augment the project. Our timeline, should this be approved, would be end-of-TAC in mid-March, and then hopefully an ILP, and the remaining permits in that mid-May period. That's where our target. So we're turning dirt, all things perfect sometime mid-May. Could be the 1st of June. I would anticipate not much vertical construction until that first part of '24. So we've got Crew Car Wash on the corner, Wawa, you probably have heard of, is coming to town. So they're excited to have a, kind of a first-tier store here. Next to the crew, we have a bank that, that we've been working with for a portion of that, and then a lot of restaurant users that want to be kind of sit-down restaurant folks, but we're kind of vetting those out right now as we build the project. And then, of course, a real marquee project with Old Town and their trail sign community. So we'll be turning over pads to a lot of those folks, kind of that late summer, early fall period, right, depending on construction, the season, so they can complete their work. And really, in that '24 period is when you'll start seeing a lot more vertical coming up.
How many acres is the retention pond, Jim?
Just shy of five acres, four point.
Good size.
It's very good size. Yeah, I mean, it's part of the legal drain. So it's obviously going to be an amenity, right? And, and part of the things that we're delivering for a trail spur that comes up through, and hopefully, you know, pulls people into the development and provides services to people on the trail, right? But yes, it's, it's, we got a lot of digging.
That pond cleans up a lot of other drainage issues we have.
That is correct, yes. Which is, hence the size got a little bit bigger, and makes other things work in the whole watershed.
I appreciate the hard work you did in the ARB to get this, that was a nice presentation. The homes are beautiful.
Thank you.
And it's a unique product.
And thank Old Town as well.
I'll thank them. Especially right on the trail, too. Yeah, the engagement of the trail is really nice.
Any other questions for Ms. Adams?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I would move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 4-2-23 on first reading.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to waive the rules and approve ordinance number 4-2-23 on first reading. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight, zero.
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I move we approve ordinance 4-2-23 as submitted.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 4-2-23. All those in favor. We will do a roll call. Just going on a roll here.
Mr. Bois.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Sparks.
Aye.
Ms. Wild.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you very much.
Go forth and develop.
Moving as fast as we can. Thank you.
Counsel to consider ordinance number 5-2-23, an ordinance amending the corporate campus planned development district regarding a waiver for lots 11 and 12 in Cumberland Point Plan Development at 9855 and 9895 Cumberland Point Boulevard.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
There we go. Ms. Yelton.
I wasn't going to say anything.
Yeah.
Good evening again. Again, this is located at the southeast corner of Cumberland Road and Cumberland Point Boulevard. This being Cumberland Road, this is Cumberland Point Boulevard. It is basically one of the last two lots in the Cumberland Point Commercial Park development to be developed. The applicants are proposing to do an industrial flex building with approximately three tenants. At the time of construction of the Boulevard here that went into Cumberland Point, we established an ingress, ingress, egress, ingress point at that location. And due to the fact that this is being a single building, it's very difficult with line of sight to, I'm going to say, relocate that point at another location along those two lots. The lots will eventually be replatted into a single lot. Again, the applicant is proposing an industrial flex building. It is the same builder that is basically constructing across the street in Washington Business Park. There were two waivers that were discussed at the Plan Commission. One of them, the area outlined here in pink, is a corporate campus standard that says you cannot have any vehicular traffic between the front building line and the, and the actual location of the building. And the other one that we talked about or discussed was a buffer for allowing pervious pavers in the perimeter landscape buffer. Again, the pervious paper idea is something that basically has been vetted through our fire department with the fire marshal. Because of the size of this building, he continually always wants to have a way to get around the entire building. And this would allow him another access or ingress egress point should this area be blocked for some reason. Again, there were no remonstrators in the audience at this public hearing. No one came forward. The Plan Commission did send it with a favorable recommendation for adoption with an 8-0-0 vote. Alex is in the audience. Should you have any questions from Patch Development?
Any questions for Ms. Yelton or for Patch?
I don't have a question. I have a comment, though. Planning Commission, since we talked about the pervious pavers, and I just said I was having a hard time seeing what that would look like, especially since it was on Cumberland Road, and I was given full backing by our planning department that it was going to look okay, and that I didn't need to worry about that. So, might be slight exaggeration, but not much. I really did.
You're going to hold me to this, aren't you?
That, that was, my only concern was I didn't, I couldn't really visualize it. I don't really know what that means. Mr. Peterson probably would shake his head and say, "I know exactly. We're fine", but I just couldn't, and so they said it would be okay.
It's a nice way to get access. Another reason is that fire trucks don't want to back up that far, so it's a way to get out if there is an emergency. And pervious pavers, they look like pavers. They look like bricks more than, so it's a nice blend, smaller landscape.
It's not going to have like a big gate up there or something like that that would look bad as you go by, so I'm told.
They just look decorative so that people don't ride one every day. Just fire trucks. Just fire trucks. Yeah.
That's all I had, sir.
Is there a recommendation that we need for passage on this one?
Again, staff would ask, since there were, there were no remonstrators, and I know that they're anxious to get started, that you would also suspend the rules on this one.
Is Alex here?
Yes.
In the very back, yeah.
Come on up. Come on up, Alex.
Good evening, counsel. Alex Chittenden, Patch Development, 400 Alpha Drive.
So because I can't read this print, how big's the building going to be, Alex?
Yeah, so this one, 56,000 square feet right now. Approximately combined the two lots, little under five acres. We've got some good action right now, so a couple engineering firms looking at it, a couple pharmaceutical firms, so.
Good.
Yeah.
What's the, how big, how tall's the building going to be?
Clear height in this one, I think, is 26 feet clear. We're going to have sloped front to back, so we do not have a parapet. All the HVAC equipment is going to be kind of hidden back on the backside of the building, so no parapet on this one.
On the covered roadside?
Actually, on the backside, so we're sloping from front to back, which is, I call the back the dock area.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
I'm glad to hear you've got some demand. It's very nice.
Yeah, yeah, we've got, we've got a lot coming down the pipeline with this and Washington Business Park, so it's been, it's been good.
Any other questions?
No.
Mr. President?
Ms. Wilds?
I would move that we suspend the rules and, or waive the rules and pass ordinance zero five dash two dash twenty-three on first reading.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to waive the rules and approve ordinance number five dash two dash twenty-three on first reading. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero?
Mr. President?
Ms. Wilds?
I would move that we approve ordinance number zero five dash zero two dash twenty-three as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number zero five dash zero two dash twenty-three. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Abstained.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays. One extension. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you for coming. Counsel to consider ordinance number zero seven dash zero two dash twenty-three and ordinance amending the corporate campus planned development district regarding waivers for Lot One in the corporate enterprise park.
Did we skip six?
Oh, we did. Thank you. Just trying to keep going. Counsel to consider ordinance number six dash two dash twenty-three and ordinance amending the Hamilton Town Center ordinance number sixty-three dash eight dash zero five regarding signage specifically for Chewy's Restaurant at 14150 Town Center Boulevard. Motion to introduce?
Second.
Ms. Yelton.
Good evening again. This is a proposed amendment to the adopted sign regulations for the Hamilton Town Center. It's specific to the Chewy's Restaurant. This item was before the Plan Commission at two separate meetings, and both times there was a lengthy discussion. The amendments include what is known as a backer, which... So the area that you show here that's blue, that is considered a backer. The arrow that goes across the front is also part of that. The words Fine Text Mix are considered a separate sign. So after much discussion at the Plan Commission meeting, the applicant did agree to basically reduce the letter sizes for the Chewy's sign to be, to meet the ordinance. So what we are actually allowing them to have on the east, west, and north sides of the building are what would be known as two signs, but the size of those signs or the letter sizes do meet the requirements. So the allowance of the backer and the arrow and what I, what we would define as two different signs on a single side of the building is what the waivers were in regard to. Again, a public hearing was held. There were no individuals that came forward to speak. The Plan Commission did send a favorable recommendation for adoption by a seven one zero vote. And Mr. Burns, who represented Chewy's previously, is here in the audience. This is, this would give you an idea of the sign that currently exists, so they will be replacing that existing sign with the proposal here that I showed you saying Chewy's and then Fine Text Mix underneath.
Any questions for Ms. Yelton or Mr. Burns?
Maybe this is more a question for Mr. Burns. Is this just a national rebranding for Chewy's? Is that the reason for the signage change?
I'll let Mr. Burns answer that question.
I would guess so, but...
I think the, probably the more correct answer that we heard at least previously, I'm sure Mr. Burns talked about this, but they kind of made some concessions the first time around, so now they're trying to bring the signage and design more in line with the new choices.
Good evening, counsel. Thank, thank for having me. Russell Burns with Chewy's Restaurants. That is correct. I mean, we, that is an updated signage that we have, but, you know, we have multiple signs out there throughout the company, so that's not the main reason. But there was a lot of hindrance with our package when we first built that restaurant to comply with the ordinances. Since then, there's been some other, restaurants come in and they're, they're lit up quite well, and so that kind of spurred the conversation. But we did come to an agreement with the Planning Commission through the last public hearing, and so we're fully prepared to comply with those requirements.
Is this just a sign on the front of the building or is it the one on the back?
It's also going to include a mechanical outline across the top. We're adding that for additional lighting. And then, again, that's the, the sign on the face of the building, which is the west elevation, and then it'd be the north and, and the, in the, in the east. Yeah.
Mr. Boyce?
I would just say that Ms. Yelton's comments about significant discussion might have been an understatement. We did spend nearly an hour on this sign, and we did, came to, to considerable consolidations, both with Mr. Burns giving us quite a bit and us coming to a middle ground, I would say, that we could be happy with and he felt like he could be happy with. So there has already been quite a bit of compromise here to get to this point, in my opinion.
Any other questions?
Mr. President, since this has gone on quite a while, I would move we waive the rules to approve ordinance oh six oh two twenty-three on the first reading.
I'm going to second that.
There's a motion and a second to waive the rules and approve ordinance number zero six dash zero two dash twenty-three on first reading. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero?
Mr. President, I would move to approve ordinance oh six oh two twenty-three.
Second? There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number zero six dash zero two dash twenty-three. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Counsel to consider ordinance number zero seven dash zero two dash twenty-three and ordinance amending the corporate campus planned development district regarding waivers for Lot One in the corporate enterprise park at 14065 Borg Warner Drive. Motion to introduce?
Second.
Ms. Yelton.
Good evening. This again is another economic development project that has been supported by the administration. You obviously have seen their proposal previously with the adoption of their development agreement. The property is located just north of Borg Warner. This is the Borg Warner, Oleo, 141st Street. This is the detentive pond for this particular area. Indiana Joint Replacement Institute is planning to construct an ambulatory surgery center there. The Plan Commission held a public hearing and discussed the waivers that were necessary and sent a favorable recommendation for adoption to the council with an eight zero zero vote. And again, staff would ask for a waiver or a suspension of the rules and adopt on first reading. And there are representatives in the audience also.
Any questions for Ms. Yelton?
Mr. President?
Ms. O'Connor?
I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance seven dash two dash twenty-three on first reading.
Second. There's a motion and a second to waive the rules and approve ordinance number zero seven dash zero two dash twenty-three on first reading. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero?
Mr. President?
Ms. O'Connor?
I move that we approve ordinance seven dash two dash twenty-three as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number seven dash two dash twenty-three. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Miscellaneous number four. Counsel to consider, or, sorry, counsel to receive summary of fiscally neutral year-end appropriations pursuant to resolution RC dash one dash twenty-two. Mr. Zaldowski?
Yes, good evening. So RC one dash twenty-two gives the Office of Finance and Accounting several fiscally neutral powers, so to say, over the budget. These are things that don't impact the budget for any reason other than regulatory compliance generally. The last part of that RC one twenty-two is just kind of getting that budget right-sized at the end of the year. So as you know, the way we budget, each of the departments comes to us with a budget. Those departments are budgeting into different, four different expense categories, so to say, and there may be situations where a department slightly overspends in a certain category, and so we just take savings from different categories and shift those appropriations over to cover those slight differences. So the total amount of transfers that were executed for the end of the year 2022 is $113,050. We try to get that down as close to zero as possible. Last year was about $350,000, and that represents about one one-thousandth of the total budget. And this doesn't increase the budget whatsoever. It's completely neutral. It's just making sure that we're compliant.
I think the best example you used was when, rather than hire a staff person to fill a spot, we'll do it as contract. So those are two different categories.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. It's, departments generally underspend in most expense categories, and so we can use those savings and just kind of move those around.
Any other questions for Mr. Zaldowski? No action needed on this one if there are no other questions. Okay, moving on. Counsel to consider resolution RC dash ten dash twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the carryforward of encumbrances from the prior budget year. Mr. Stricker?
It's a pleasure to present this resolution to you. I'm Steve Stricker, your deputy controller. You have in your packet resolution number RC dash ten dash twenty-three. It is a routine action to carry forward dollars that you have approved in 2022 for remaining commitments the city still has through a contractual agreement or certain other business-type partnerships. This resolution is broken down by fund, further broken down by department, and then finally broken down by expenditure series. A couple of examples of expenditures that we're asking to carry forward is in Fund 106, Department 026, the 300 series. The vendor is Duke Energy. The amount is $884,733.73. Its purchase order number 210266, and it's for 146th Street Lighting to be installed and completed in 2023. Another example of a carryforward that we want to get your permission is in Fund 114, Department 05, in the 400 series. The vendor is Hoosier Fire Equipment. The amount is $609,816. Its purchase order number 210190, and it's for a pumper fire truck to be built and delivered in the fall of 2023. I ask that you approve this resolution to authorize the carryforward of the encumbrances from the prior budget year for the listed funds.
Thank you. I always appreciate the conversation that goes on in the finance committee about things like this, you know? We always talk about in a private business, if it was, if we were operating that way, it was just something that we would account for, but because it's a public fund, we have to, you know, go through these routine motions each year. So it is good to have some examples like that. Any other questions?
Mr. President?
Ms. O'Connor?
I would move to approve resolution RC dash ten dash twenty-three as presented.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve resolution RC dash ten dash twenty-three. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero. Counsel to receive the annual report of expired warrants pursuant to IC five dash eleven dash 10.5 for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022. Mr. Stricker?
Another routine exercise that we need to go through. State law requires that on December 31st of each year, the fiscal officer of the city is required to void all unclaimed warrants and checks drawn against city funds for, that are at least two years old. This state law also stipulates that by March 1st, we need to file that list of checks that we are voiding to you, the city council. So you have in front of you a listing of the checks that we are voiding. $408.41 is civil city money. $632.42 is utility money. There should be no action required.
Any other questions before we move on?
I always look for my name and then it's me.
Yeah, right? Indiana claimed. Okay, moving on. Counsel to consider resolution RC dash eleven dash twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the investment of public funds pursuant to IC five dash thirteen dash nine dash five. Mr. Spalding?
Mr. President, members of the council, again, Jeff Spalding, CFO and Controller, and wrapping up the array of, you know, fiscal ritualistic actions. This, this one additional is now, under current state law, you have to approve this annually. And what this action is, is basically saying, you know, the city is authorized when looking to, you know, invest the funds that are sitting currently in its checking account, looking to try to, you know, get better interest for the taxpayers, that kind of thing, that we're allowed to shop for rates of return statewide in different CDs and so on and so forth. So this is, this is to invest the cash balances that the city's sitting on at any point in time, doesn't necessarily represent cash that is excess or anything. It's just, as you run a business, there's always cash balances, money coming in and out, and, you know, if you're trying to manage it effectively, you want to invest it, and that's become particularly true in the last year as we moved into a new interest rate environment. So with that, it authorizes this for another year, and I'll be back next year with the same request.
You're not investing in Bitcoin, right?
No, you're not actually.
Tight guidelines from the state.
Yeah, the constraints around what you're allowed to invest in are pretty narrow and rigid, so.
Coinbase.
Mr. President?
Ms. Wilds?
I would move that we approve resolution RC dash eleven dash twenty-three as presented.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve resolution RC dash eleven dash twenty-three. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero. We've come to the end of our agenda. Anybody have a comment from the council?
Happy Valentine's Day.
Yeah, happy Valentine. Yeah. What a treat.
Have we... Stop spending Valentine's Day with all of you.
Yes, yes. My wife is pleased. Okay. Yes, yes. My wife is pleased. Okay, if nothing else, we are adjourned.